Yeah, it's right there. I see. Nope, wait.
This is Mayor Fred Sore this Wednesday, October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five at six thirty three P. M., and I call the council meeting to order. Finance Director Katie Williamson, please take your local.
Yes, okay, we have Ellis.
Yes.
Francie.
Here.
Gayton. Archim.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Matty.
Here.
Morrison. Carachini. Fredo.
Here.
Sore.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Please stand if you're able for the pledge allegiance.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't want to take nominations for the Gains and Buried Council President from ten.
I nominate Josh Francie second.
Any other nominees? Do we need the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
We have the approval of the agenda. And motion to accept this.
No move.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, I'd like to find out that David Gayton is trying to.
All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and your word or what city you reside. No comments will see me? Okay.
Okay, we've got the consent agenda, which includes some minutes from the October twenty second, two thousand and twenty five meeting. I need to read accept this.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
同意.
Any opposed? If the mayor did report in his absence, any council? Okay. Any staff reports tonight?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Fred Sore. Tonight is the second reading of the two thousand and twenty six preliminary budget. I did submit a report to all of you that's on your, should be in front of you. I wanted to give you an update on the impact of the federal shutdown. So far, the only department that has direct impact on federal shutdown is the fire department. Chief Bowling has reported that there has been a decrease in E. M. F. payments received mainly for Medicaid, which in turn also affects the ground emergency medical transportation funding. So we will continue to monitor that and keep you informed if anything drastic happens with that. I'm beginning to also reach out to Y. New Chief, the Y. New Chief. In regards to the Y. New Chief Dam project, I will be reaching out to stakeholders. I've already met with each of the county commissioners. I've reached out to the city of Montesano, and then I will also be reaching out to both the Chakalas and the Kamau tribes. An update on the museum process is I've reached out to the Department of Commerce to begin the conversation with them. And then Parks Director Stacy Barnum, and we've also reached out to the Washington State Historical Society, and we've also discussed things with our legal teams. So I wanted to give you just a heads up on that as we're making progress with that. On Monday, the Economic Development Advisory Committee met for the first time. And so with the second meeting, we will start to really build structure around the process of creating a strategic recommendation to the council. H. R. Director Danny Smith has worked with the Aberdeen School District to gather names of students who are interested in being a student council representative. There was a recommendation made by Councilmember Morrison to see if we could include both of those. So I would like some direction from the council. In the past, what we've done is put an interview panel together comprised of a couple council members, and then they brought forward a recommendation to the council. So I would definitely love some direction as how the council would like me to proceed. And I'm open to that right now.
Thank you. I think that that you're one, we're a pretty big body of council members, and that having two student representatives in this already big group of people just makes it a bit untenable. If there were only six of us, then that might make sense. But in terms of space and involvement, I think having one representative worked really well before. And to essentially compete for that position is is a life lesson in itself and a badge of honor to whomever is given that representative position. We could consider having a primary student representative and then an alternate that in the event that the primary couldn't make it, that the alternate could step in.
I think that that suggestion is kind of best of both worlds, really. I mean, the suggestion was before that we utilize both of them, and if we do a primary and alternate, then we kind of argue to us, no, do none of that plus one of them. I like that idea.
Could we pull it like a vote by the student body? It'd be more of a, like a real election.
We put it on the schools to have their election going.
Right.
As a protest coming through.
I think that, yeah, I think the school's already done their election.
Oh, they are.
Yeah. And so maybe that could be something, like, we could talk to the school district about including next year during the A. S. B. elections and see if they could have that included as well.
I like that idea. And I was like, they need to have them in the majority of the. The exception will serve in different forms as well.
So, um, I'm hearing go ahead and keep both of them and then have one be a primary and one be an alternate.
And that might be something for the interview panel to decide who is the primary and who is the alternate. So still interview them.
Okay. How would the primary and the alternate work? Like, if the primary is not available, then the alternate fill in?
Yeah, like a delegate to a convention.
Can they get without a layer of responsibility for them to communicate with each other about, or maybe they can be there, what's important to be discussed?
Director Smith, do you see any issues for that, or do you need any further direction?
Actually, how it's written, the other diagram and the alternate.
Okay.
That's how it's.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We just only got one application last year, is that right?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. And then lastly, I thank you for that direction. Lastly, I just wanted to publicly give special thanks to the public work staff, who ensured that our stormwater basins were ready for the atmospheric river last weekend. The street sweeper and the crew were working really hard all week to clear out the drains. And if you are a member of the public, just remember, if you see that your catch basins are full of leaves, if you can assist the city by clearing them out if you can. Otherwise, you can submit a citizen action request, and we will send the street sweeper over. But until that point, it's important to keep this thing. But I'd also like to give a special thanks to Grace Harbor P. U. D. for putting in long hours to restore power, not only to the residents of Aberdeen, but all over Grace Harbor County. Are there any questions on my report? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Long amount of presentations. You have a presentation from Activate Grace Harbor Blue Zones. It's going to be done right this.
Good evening. Do we have a presentation? Okay. Well, while that's getting set up, let me introduce myself. My name is Chris Frye. I live in Oakview. For about two more days, I'm the executive director of Grace Harbor Activate. Part of Blue Zones was a countywide initiative. We worked in Elma, Aberdeen, Ocean Shores, and Oakview. Do I have a clicker, or do I just?
Oh, just let me know.
All right, all right, thank you. Next place. All right, in a nutshell, this was about a two-year, eight-month initiative. February of two thousand and twenty three, I was hired. Blue Zones Activate Grace Harbor, Activate Grace Harbor County was activated, and we had about an eight-month, nine-month discovery process. And in that discovery process, we looked at two things. And the goal of Blue Zones, for those that aren't familiar, and keep it simple, is want to make the healthy choice the easy choice in Grace Harbor County. We also had, Lewis County and Mason County had similar initiatives as well. And so we focused on two primary variables. One is food policy. We created a Grace Harbor Healthy Food Alliance Food Policy Council, and that is something entirely different than what I came here today to talk about. And we also dealt with built environment. And built environment really is just a fancy term for natural movement, movability, walking trails, bike trails, et cetera. And so in this discovery process, and we have representatives from Parks and Rec, Roblin's Construction, Grace Harbor College, Coastal Cal, Public Health, our mayor from Coffee was involved at the time. Basically, got together in a room and decided what we wanted to do for a movement is to create a trail network through Grace Harbor County. So we'd have one in Elma, we'd have one in Ocean Shores, and then we'd create this trail network that ideally would start at, you know, Grace Harbor College, and you could ride your bike safely all the way through Oakview to Cape. And so what I'm here to present today is the Aberdeen-specific trail that we designed for Aberdeen if they chose to use it. Next slide, please. In this report, I have mapping of the trail system, general design, wayfinding signage, and then I have two gifts for you guys. One will come tomorrow, and the other one's sitting right here. I'll talk about that in a little bit. Next slide, please. So in review, the objective with developing a trail system was to have a safe bike trail through Oakview all the way to Aberdeen and vice versa. So when I mean by safe is your ten-year-old on a B. M. X., you could say, hey, you have the keys to the city. Good luck. Ride your bike to the park, ride your bike to the college, et cetera. And so part of that is our routes are not necessarily always the shortest or the quickest routes. They're the safest routes. We wanted to identify the association that could assist the cities with making this happen. We understand that Parks and Rec has a lot of balls in the air. Cities have a lot of things going on. So we didn't want to walk into the room and say, hey, we got this great idea. Let's design this bike trail system, and good luck. It's on your lap. You have to do it by yourself now. So we were very aware of that and wanted to identify a nonprofit organization that could help. And also, we wanted to install two public bicycle workstations, pumps, and bike racks. And I'll go into greater detail of what those are. So next slide. So this is tough for you guys to see here today. I apologize. I'm not a creative design guy. But in a nutshell, this was the Aberdeen Trail Network, and I have two slides following this where we get a little bit closer. But there are four different types of trails that would make sense in Aberdeen. And one is your standard bike lane, and we'll go over these briefly. Bike Boulevard, there are very few instances of need for bike lanes, but the blue, a tremendous amount of bike boulevards, and I'll go into detail of what those are. And then you have orange, you have your existing trails, you have great trail systems, in particular in South Aberdeen. And then red, because of our bridges, we sort of have a recommended no-bike water. Next slide, let's. And then here is South Aberdeen. And like I said, it's tough for everyone in attendance to see this. My apologies. But a lot of blue, and you have the two existing trails there. But the key is, is that on both sides of the highway, you have safe back roads that you can get to Aberdeen Central as well as Grace Harbor College, hit Pioneer Park, and hit the middle school. And then I forget the name of the trail that takes you out to Bishop Complex, that you can easily access that trail as well, as well as the trail that would get you to Coffee. Next slide, please. And then here's the downtown Aberdeen Trail Network. In a nutshell, this gives you access once you cross the bridge from South Aberdeen all through downtown safely. You can get to Sam Ben, you can get to the Kirk Cobain Park, you can get to Stewart Field. And you can get also, the two most important arterials are heading towards Oakview, and that's Aberdeen and Cherry Way. And those would ideally be bike boulevards that can get you all the way into Aberdeen, or I'm sorry, into Oakview and bypass the Olympic Stadium with Cherry, and then right there at the Fry Creek with Aberdeen. Next slide, please. All right, bike boulevard. We have a bunch of bike boulevards. That's actually advantageous. Those are cheaper to implement. You'd be surprised how expensive striping is, white lines. But bike boulevards are basically bike paths where it's shared usage. So in a perfect world, you want it on the roads that are narrow, narrower roads being people drive slower. And you can share the road. And oh, yeah, and you want it to be twenty in a perfect world, twenty miles per hour slower, but they can be used all the way up to thirty miles per hour. And here's an example on the right of that Peter-generated photo, and then a real-life example on the right of that of an individual on a bike boulevard. Next slide. Here is the wayfinding signage that's typically used for bike boulevards. We'll be talking about that in a little bit. And then the striping for bike boulevards. So rather than having the dollar fifty a linear foot, you guys have that's twenty-two miles worth of trail. So do the math if you're paying dollar fifty a linear foot. With bike boulevards, you're really just, and you can decide, you want it every twenty-five yards, you want it every hundred yards, up to two hundred yards, depending on the budget. You would just have basically the bike boulevard striping rather than the linear white straight lines. So when you sit down to do the math, this is the big difference. Standard bike lane, you guys are very familiar with these, designated by a bike route or a bike lane, wayfinding sign like that. And then you have your standard bike lane right there. Next slide. Right here in front of City Hall, you have the standard bike lane with street parking. So you have your bike lane, you have your vehicular lane, you have a bike lane, and then you have an area for parking. And that's key, particularly in that Cherry Street, Aberdeen Avenue, Cherry Avenue with parking. You have a lot of individuals that park on the street there. And on the right also, there's an ideal scenario where you can see the buffer. You have an extra about eighteen inches to twenty-four inches between the bike lane and the vehicular lane. Next slide. White, walk your bikes zone. These are highly recommended. Between Oakview and Aberdeen, we have a lot of bridges and a lot of big rivers that you just can't build a bike bridge. And so although tons of people ride their bikes over these bridges, my recommendation and our recommendation would be that you have it just mounted. Not that they would have to do it, not that we'd have to patrol it, but just a recommendation from the city. Next slide. Other key design items. So there is an electronic report, and then there's two hard copies there, and I have one right here. And in it, that's not in the presentation, is a bunch of boring Excel spreadsheet items. And what you will learn is when you're designing a pad, there's a lot, how often do you have signs? Do you want it two per block, four per block, the beginning and the end, in both directions, one direction? And then how often do you want white paint, and how often do you want green paint? And a lot of times, because of cost, we fail to use green paint. But we highly recommend, for two reasons, the green paint that you will see there is, one, it's reassuring for cyclists, like, this is a designated bike lane. And two, for vehicular traffic, when you see green, I think it, oh, that is a bike lane for safety reasons. And then second, that's called a cross bike, not a crosswalk. And those are recommended at every intersection where you have a bike lane or a bike route. So you're on this road, everybody on this road sees the sign, sees the striping, but the roads that cross, I guess, perpendicular, they have no idea that that's a bike lane. And these cross bikes, and you'll see them in the data and in the map in that spreadsheet, are highly recommended per block, every block to have two of them. It just helps for sight reasons. Next slide, please. All right, wayfinding. Next slide, please. You have basically three options. I listed two here for how you want to do wayfinding. Wayfinding is basically a simple or a fancy term for, you know, mapping out via signs for both cyclists and vehicular traffic. But what you're trying to create is an arterial road for bikes and for bike traffic. And you can use the old-school M. U. T. C. O., basically the manual on traffic control devices. These are the signs that we typically see in cities. This is a cheaper version, very familiar version, easy-to-severe version. Option number two, that's the next slide. Option number two is we hired a group called Pickle Flower. And once again, this isn't just Aberdeen. This has been a countywide option. What you're looking at right here is Ocean Shores signage. But Pickle Flower designed four different unique look. Basically, the colors match the high school colors for each town. So Elma's blue, obviously, Ocean Shores with black and yellow, black and gold. And they created these beautiful signs. And in a perfect world, we'd like to have these throughout county. However, they are high quality and beautiful. The bad part is they're more expensive. So that gets us to option three, which would basically be a hybrid, utilizing the M. U. T. C. D. signs for the majority, but to have trailheads and whatnot designed that basically ties the whole county together. There's been talk for years about rails to trails. So this basically system designs bike trails throughout our towns, and then rails to trails would provide us bike trails in between our towns. So McLeary to Elma, Elma to Monty, Monty through Blue Slade to Cosi, Cosi to, through the towns, Aberdeen and Oakview, and then rails to trails, or trails to rails from Oakview to Ocean Shores. Big picture. All right, public workstation. Next slide, please. So we have two of these here for you. I apologize ahead of time. I realize I didn't do a good job. This was for Oakview right here, but it should be for Aberdeen. Choice Regional Health Network, who are the sponsors of Blue Zones Activate Grace Harbor County, has gifted two public workstations and two pumps and two bike racks to Aberdeen. They donated one to Ocean Shores, one to Elma, and one to Oakview. Oakview will be an art pop into the park. Ocean Shores is the convention center. Elma is going to be across the street from the City Hall. And talking to Mr. Mayor, we think in general, placing one of these sort of in that Pioneer Park, I think, I hope I pronounced it right, Basich Trail area would be a great location. And then possibly putting one in the downtown core, Sam Ben Park, or west, if you're on Cherry or Aberdeen. But if you don't know what these are, prior to Blue Zones being here, there's only one of these in the whole entire county. It was in Monty at Jean's Burger Shop. And if you don't know what these are, they're basically sort of, they have a bunch of templates. Every tool you would ever need to work on your bike. You pick up your bike, you set it on the rack there. The tools all hang off. Allen Rich's tube tools. So if you break down, if your bike breaks down, you need maintenance or whatnot. You don't have to go to the boat cycle reef. We only have one bike shop, I think, in the county. You don't have to stop doing what you're doing. You identify one of these. And so now that we'll have two, three, four, five, six within our county. So that was the method to the max. Next slide, please. All right, next slide. So just to be clear, we always get a lot of questions, and so I wanted to be clear about this. All the design work completed by myself, and Dan Burton, who is a consultant for, he designed traffic calming and whatnot in Missoula, Montana, and a bunch of other communities. He came here and helped design this. That was all paid for by Blue Zones and Choice. The design work by Pickle Flower for the wayfinding signage, that was paid for by Blue Zones. And these public workstations were all paid for and gifted by the Choice Regional Health Network. Implementation of the trail network will occur via primarily having to apply for grants. And we go into this understanding that a lot of communities have already earmarked certain grants for different sporting events, or sporting facilities, or this, that, and the other. So we want to work with the cities to make this happen, with their support, but not like throwing it on their lap. Say, we've designed this, now make it happen. So we do understand that a lot of grants out there have already been earmarked for other projects across the county. And so we want to work intimately with all four cities so that we don't step on any toes. Next slide, please. Cost considerations, variety of potential costs associated with a project like this. There's a spreadsheet in there that shows all the variations. So this is sort of an average cost estimate, what it could be. Estimates were secured through local vendors as well as A. I. when vendors were unavailable with quotes. Next slide, please. Wayfinding signage through Pickle Flowers, that's kind of a high end, depending on how many we need, what size, et cetera. So that's to be determined. But the M. U. T. C. D., you would need seven bike route signs, one hundred and eighty-eight bike boulevard signs, six watch for traffic signs, and ninety-three directional signs, comes out between seventeen and twenty-one thousand dollars. Next slide. And then striping, your solid line striping is amazingly low at eight thousand, but the green cross bikes, one hundred and fifty-nine units at six hundred is ninety-six thousand. Green painted paths, twenty-two thousand, and bike lane symbols, five hundred and twenty-two units of those. It's about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Now, here's the cool part. I've requested from Choice that they purchase and give us through the Grace Harbor Sports Association a striping machine, industrial striping machine that they would. So we hired a third party somewhere off of the I. Five border. They would come into town, they would strip at a dollar fifty, a linear foot, et cetera, et cetera. But that's the major expense to utilize their equipment and their manpower. And so our county would have its own equipment, so that if we chose to do this, that's one less cost. And so we'd be looking for grants for paint rather than painting and third-party equipment. So Choice is pretty solid for outside-of-the-box thinking and allowing this to happen. Next slide, please. So in a nutshell, us not doing it ourselves, us doing it with a third party would be about three hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. All right, next steps. All right, in a nutshell, we wanted to create a local organizing committee. We have Grace Harbor Sports Association that have, that will be working in Oakview, that has offered themselves to work here in Aberdeen, and Aberdeen wanted that. We need to work with the city, particularly the engineers. This is our recommendation. You could choose to do none of it. You could choose to do all of it, or you could choose to do aspects of it. But we wanted to provide this to you so that would take a huge step. but we wanted to provide this to you so that would take a huge step, uh. Yeah, this designing takes quite a long time. Uh, want to work with the city to confirm the design, discuss the engineering with the city, identify and apply for grants and then work on phase implementation. So that is overall what Blue Zones Activate wanted to donate and give. And as part of the countywide network, uh, this is the Aberdeen aspect of. So you've had any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, in addition to the health benefits, did you talk about, um, state biking for commuters? And perhaps how to make the existing bike lanes better?
Well, we had to sort of, our first goal was to make it that you could safely, whether you're a commuter or you're a 10-year-old on a BMX and anything in between, so that you could get through town on a safe bike trail. And so our thought process, we believe in, um, low hanging fruit and momentum. So maybe we started this and then, and Aberdeen's been great. I mean, I never realized how many bike trails you have. Uh, a lot of those are on busier roads. Uh, they could be used, uh, definitely could be used, but I, I always looked at it through the eyes of a 10-year-old on a BMX. Uh, but the first step would be to, to get this and then hopefully a gentleman from the city council in Elma asked me that question. So I don't see a lot of cyclists right now. Why would we spend this money on trails? And if you build it, they will come. And we firmly believe that. Uh, I moved here from Spokane 10 years ago. I got into this because my youngest daughter and I are going to go to 7-Eleven to get a slurpee. And, uh, live up by the cemetery, we're right down the hill, went to Prongos guy hit three or four times. And, uh, I, this was horrible. And I, you know, Spokane, they have trails everywhere. And I didn't really realize it until I was here that we didn't have trails. Uh, and that went to the mayor and said, hey, I'm not a problem, I'm a solution guy. Let's put a trail together and then COVID hit. And then here we are now with Blue Zones. It was a perfect opportunity. But so our initial goal was to get some momentum and start with being able to get basically Grace Harbor College to give. Thank you. Yes.
Uh, this is more of a comment. Um, just a reminder to the council that, um, I think a couple of years ago, uh, parks, um, director Daisy Barnum organized, um, the Cascade uh, bicycle club from Seattle to come down. They chose Aberdeen as their host city for their club. And we had about 100 bicyclists that their starting place. So they stayed in our hotels and they ate our food and, um, and so we received them and we rolled out the red carpet for them. They loved it and they did, um, 50 mile uh, loops down to Westport, up to Winuji, um, out to Ocean Shores. And so, uh, they really enjoyed it and hopefully we'll be able to host another club. Again, they ate at our restaurants, they stayed at our hotels. Um, and they stimulated the economy here in Aberdeen.
And, and to piggyback off that, if you don't mind, my goal is all those individuals that drive through our community on their way to Seabrook and Ocean Shores and Westport that I want them to drive through and be like, holy cow, what's this in Aberdeen and Hope Way? This is amazing. And, and just to get people to stop and spend money in the community and view where wearing a different hat, looking at buildings, sports facilities and complexes, one of it. This is part of that. And, uh, having beautiful trail systems. People never thought this would be in Aberdeen or in Hope Way. So, uh, that is one of the goals. Yes.
I also hadn't thought that if it was raining nasty and they needed to change attire, it would be nice to have a covered place where that workstation, repair station was located. And, and then if you could co-locate that where there's a bathroom as well, that would be really valuable.
Yes.
And maybe that's a public building, like city hall or fire station, a library.
Agreed. And so maybe we take that in consideration. I think by Pioneer Park makes perfect sense for South Aberdeen, but maybe downtown four would be, uh, Elma's across the street from the city hall and, uh, Hope Way is at Art Poplinton and they have bath restaurants there. And an additional thing, this wasn't part of Blue Zones, but the other thing, when I say safe, I mean safe from a variety of things. When you go on college campuses, I forget proper termination of this, that they have the big blue button. If you feel physically threatened, you run up and you hit the blue button on this tower and instantly dial 911, light, the sliver goes off and a camera turns on. And, uh, I, I'll be honest, I have two daughters and one of them plays soccer all the time and the other one wants to come and be and walk around Bishop. And there's a lot of space on that trail that you can't see and you don't know who's out there. So not saying not to use it, but maybe if we had some of those towers, safety emergency towers in different locations, I would make our trail even safer. All right. Well, thank you so very much for having me. I appreciate it. And I'll drop off the others tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to a bus for council motion, let's start with findings for chair president.
First on the list, requesting the city council open a public hearing for the ordinance of the 2025 property tax levy for collection in 2026. Bill number 25 dash 11. View this.
Second. Motion and a second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Abode? Motion good. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment specifically on the 2025 property tax level? Dana?
I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and seconded, it closed the public hearing and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Abode? Public hearing is now closed.
Continue for your first. Request city council to open the public hearing for the 2026 budgetary, uh, preliminary budget. Bill 20, number 25 dash 12. Open hearing.
Second. Second and seconded, just to open up the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aberdeen.
Second. Second and seconded, it closed the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings booked.
Okay. Requesting city council open a public hearing for, of the ordinance on the 2025 supplemental budget ordinance, bill number 25 dash 10. I made the note, you can open this. Public hearing.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment regarding the 2025 supplemental budget? Next?
Public hearing.
Second.
Second and seconded, it closed the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is now closed.
Ordinance. Yeah. The second reading, requesting city council approve the second reading of the ordinance on the 2025 property tax levy for selection in 2026, bill number 25 dash 11. Open. Whatever. Computer.
We'll second that.
Your motion, favor.
Except this meeting, yeah.
We'll second that.
Second and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Second reading, request city council approve the second reading of the 2026 preliminary budget, bill number 25 dash 12, make way in excess ordinance.
Second.
Second and seconded, is there any discussion? Let's remember that.
Yeah, I would just like to point out a few things about this budget that I think we should be pretty proud of. Um, given that the challenge was, um, before the mayor and staff to come up with a very conservative budget that kept us on track from staying out of hotter waters than we're already in. Um, and somehow they managed to, um, keep funding for animal control, which was important to us and, and our constituents as well as parking enforcement. And, um, and I think it took a lot of, um, careful juggling to make this budget work as well as it does. I'm, I'm pretty pleased with it.
Yeah, that was, um, I'd like to point out that we did have a couple additions to this, um, to the budget and that includes, um, a piece of life-saving equipment for the fire department that was requested. Um, so the adjustment was about $48,000 in total and the second would be was, um, I'm sorry, the second piece was for the provisional worker. Oh, for the provisional downtown worker. In 2020, for the 2025 budget, we eliminated a provisional downtown cleanup worker. And about two weeks into the year of not having someone cleaning up downtown, we recognized that that was a mistake. Um, so we added the provisional worker. And again, that's not a permanent worker that we have, um, in there. So it's someone that we, we always kind of add. Um, again, they're not permanent workers, so they, they're not entitled to a lot of the same things as permanent workers are. But we recognize the importance of having a dedicated worker to cleaning up downtown. So again, the adjustment that we made was $48,000, um, to the budget that we're proposing today.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move that we make a second reading, the third.
Second.
Second and seconded, is there any discussion?
Aye. Where is it?
We talked about in finance today about the most doing work to, just to be sure that anyone who from the public could get the opportunity to come tonight, would have the opportunity to come to the next council meeting. And the discussion, any questions?
Okay. Fair enough. I would rescind my motion.
Next ordinance, uh, second reading, requesting the city council approve the second reading of the ordinance for the 2025 supplemental budget ordinance, bill number 25 dash 2. I made motion, we accept. Orders.
Second.
And moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes. For ten. Um, there was an adjustment made to this, um, the city council, uh, there was a an additional, I think we forgot to include the tax on the, uh, screen sweepper. So it's an adjustment of about $25,000 to the already 325,000 that was spent for the streets.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to public safety. Um, chair person, chair keys, not here nor is coat vice chairs.
No, I'm second on that one.
Oh, I'll be second.
All right, we have, we have no reports and nothing to bring from council side.
On to public works, council member, Nancy.
Yeah, I just got a few updates. The C flick fix program is in the works and will be coming soon. Uh, similar thing with the market screen trees, they will be on it at least. And, uh, on the topic of the rail separation, uh, mostly waiting on the federal government, but our group works getting everything ready by then. All right.
So two special agenda items from there, which will also be the council member.
Yeah, it's the first reading, uh, requesting the city council to create an ordinance to adopt statute RCW 46, uh, 61 570 regarding parking table code entry description of reports. Bill number 25 dash 14, I'm going to accept this request.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. So I'm going to open the floor back up for public comments. Can you tell me if I'm up to three minutes? And please leave a name in more or less city where you reside. So one more question, anything for the diversity order? Council member else?
Yeah, um, as I think everyone is aware, there is a, um, pedestrian plan that's out for review. And, um, it's available all online, um, cities. I think public works by website. And there are many pieces, but, um, one of those appendices is a nice summary of how many and where we have curvilles and driveways and, um, and other elements of pedestrian safety. And the overall picture for Aberdeen is that our pedestrian assets are in pretty poor condition. And so this plan's a good beginning for prioritizing which areas to, um, improve upon and how to go about doing that. It may be that there's a nice overlap with the Blue Zone concept um, for walkers as well as bikers. Um, but improving mobility for all of our citizens is very important. And this plan, um, invites citizens to send in comments and make suggestions and I think there's a workshop coming up as well.
Anything else?
Uh, so I just wanted to maybe have a little discussion. Um, I've noticed in the brief time that I've been on council that we tend to have a habit to just automatically excuse all absences when people are not here for council meetings. And I, I think the established practice at least at one point was that if we were not going to make it to a council meeting, we need to reach out to the council president and actually have a reason for not coming. And so I wanted to see what we could do to maybe get back to that and stop just automatically excusing all absences that, that don't really have a, a reason behind them.
I will say, um, most often I did that came on for a phone call or a conversation that doesn't explain why folks are not here. Um, I was not under the impression it was my place to excuse them while sitting in a spot with them. And so I did not excuse those.
I'm sure it concerns, um, that we not just rubber stamp um, absences, being here is really important work. And, um, for what we get paid to do and people expect of us. But if, um, council members are reporting to council president, um, and that information isn't shared with the rest of us and nor should it be. um and that information isn't shared with the rest of us and nor should it be necessarily, then it seems like we will be depending upon a recommendation from the council president or the person filling in that role to to make that recommendation that we're going to excuse these individuals.
So maybe we just need to make sure that 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 motion is being made by the council president and not by other members of the public council.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, I move that we go into close session to discuss personal matters related to strategies for collective bargaining or employment commissions from the session, public meeting would harm the bodies and negotiating position. There is no anticipated action after this meeting.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven twenty-four, and you're recessed for over thirty-five minutes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yes, I'm excited. Yes, uh, initially any five decimal will be. I think there are ones from the town. And I've watched, yeah.
He hung back and was talking.
Yeah, and I think that's the.
That's right. In the right location.
I was wrong.
Well, there's, there's, do you know the way for it? No.
I thought it was. But the ones that I got, oh, baby.
I move reconvene. Second. Aye. I move to be close. Second. All in favor?
Aye.